Are you not sitting? Yes, we are. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us. I'd like to call to order the public-- I'd like to call to order the Public Works Session of the Rockville Center Board of Education for November 1st, 2018. Could everybody rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There's no-- In case of an emergency, follow the exits, the exits on the back doors and exit out to the parking lot and down the hall to the back of the building. That's not on here because of Public Works. Dr. Johnson, items for information.
I'm just going to ask that Ronnie Lalo, who is-- this is not Robert Bartels, by the way-- Ronnie, in Robert's absence, generally sits in his seat, and so she's going to have an opportunity to do it tonight publicly. So if you would like to just give us a rough idea what the audit is about and what we're going to do. Go.
I don't know if this is on.
It is.
It's on.
It's on.
Okay, well, I'm just-- Is it on, really? I just want to introduce the-- our audit team here. We have two gentlemen from upstate New York from EFPR. I think it's Tom and Joe. Tom is going to do the presentation tonight summarizing our audit, which took place during the summer, the audit of our financial statements ending June 30th, 2018.
Thank you for the introduction, Ronnie.
Here to go over a few of the snapshots to summarize the audit we issued a couple weeks ago to meet the 10:15 New York State deadline. We issued unmodified opinions on the financial statements, which also included the actual classroom student activity funds as well as the federal awards requirements for single audit purposes. We had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls, which we went over with management. And we like to really say that management was a real pleasure to work with, got everything we needed on a very timely basis, and we like to really thank them for that. And I just want to really emphasize that the financial statements are clean and that our opinions are unmodified. Unless you have any questions, that's really the summary of this year's audit.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Please, go right ahead. Thank you very much, Ronnie.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Dr. Johnson, district testing results?
Yes, each year, we, in the fall, provide a summary of the information that we have collected from the state with regard to the test results in grades three through eight. And in addition to that, also, since it is done somewhat separately, the Regents' report for the school district having to do primarily with South Side High School. We also include in that as well is the results from the IB testing, and we will do it in two parts. I'm going to ask that Dr. Pelletieri present first of all to us both the state. And for many of you who know already, we use the NWEA as a way to supplement the information that we get from the state, so he'll do both for us tonight. Dr. Pelletieri?
Dr. Johnson, thank you very much. This presentation will be slightly longer than our audit presentation. We begin, as we do each year, with a review of our state testing results. I just put up, for example, the grade-three performance level descriptions. This is not meant for people in the audience-- I see your face. I don't mean for you to read that from there. So this is just-- this will be posted online, so you can look at it closely if you wish. I just have the four levels there. Level one is a student who is well below proficient. Level two, for New York State, is a student who is approaching, partially proficient. Level three is proficient, and level four, excels. Again, all this information is on the Engage NY website, where parents can go to it as well if they want to look more closely at it. So I'm going to jump right in with grade three. As a backdrop to everything we discuss tonight with the state tests, there are refusal-- refusal rates. Opt-out's a little easier to say than refusal, but we have refusal rates. You'll see with grade three, almost 50 percent, 48 percent. So it does make it difficult to make statements, profound statements about the data, because you do have almost half of your students not taking the test. We are here in grade three above, well above, New York State in terms of proficiency levels for our level-three and four students. Grade three ELA. Grade four ELA, we are again above the state. Refusal level, you'll notice, goes up as the students begin to go higher, for the most part, in terms of their courses of study with us, is their grade. Grade five ELA compared to New York State.
And, Chris, the refusals, opt-outs, is that consistent across all of our elementaries? Or fairly consistent?
Fairly consistent. I think one school that is somewhat more of an outlier is Hewitt School, does not have as many opt-outs as there are in the other buildings. But we are fairly consistent. A lot of work went into grade six. I just want to comment on this one for a second and commend those teachers and the middle school administrations. Janine Sempino, who works in my office, that you've met several times, worked hand-in-hand with the teachers this past year around grade-six curriculum last year. And really, I know it's difficult to say one way or another when you have 60 percent of the students not taking the test, but to have 83 percent of the students, those that were tested proficient, I really commend them. That's a number they've not been near in quite some time. Really outstanding job. Grade seven has been consistent. Again, refusal, 68 percent refusal rate, and here we are, almost approaching a 70 percent refusal rate. This is-- will be an area of focus. I'll talk about it when we talk about NWEA as well, when I talk about some of the correlation between what's happening with our state test results and our NWEA results. This is a phenomenon that concerns me also. Our grade-four science, which all our students take, the 96 percent is fantastic. It's consistent, what we've done years past, but if you look at the refusal rate for science, it's up to 17 percent.
Now, in the past, we didn't have a refusal rate for science.
Last year, it started to inch up. This-- so when I say last year, two years ago. Last year, that's a high for us, without a doubt. That's something I've spoken to the principals about, and my concern is that-- I know some people use a letter that kind of opts them out of all state tests and things like that, and I've spoken to principals about talking with parents and teachers talking with parents around the science test. I think it's a test kids actually enjoy taking, and it does talk to us about our curriculum and inform our curriculum, and we can do-- we can look at gaps or areas of concern with that data. So it's still a test-- it's a similar test that's been given over many years. So I am concerned that those numbers of kids are not taking that test, for what it's worth. Again, grade descriptors, level descriptors for the math. I was going to slide over to math. 80 percent of our students are proficient or excel in grade-three math. Grade-four math, 59 percent. Grade-six, again, you see the refusal now inching up towards 60 percent of the students not participating. 65 percent in grade-seven. Grade-seven-- grade-six, seven, and eight really are a program that is guiding us toward algebra in eighth grade and preparation for algebra in eighth grade. So historically, we've always looked at these with an eye towards, well, what happens with algebra? That's what's really-- what's really important for us. You'll see that there's no grade-eight math test because we go right into the algebra. So here are our South Side Middle School Regents' results for the past couple of years, just so you could see some numbers. In 16, 17, you'll see to the left. When we talk about Common Core Algebra, South Side Middle School, 95 percent in 2016, and the regional passing percent at 86 percent for algebra. Our students take this test in eighth grade. So these are all of our-- pretty much universally-- virtually all of our students universally enrolled in eighth grade. All of our students have taken that test. The 2016 regional percent passing is Nassau County. That's the region. And many of those students are taking-- some-- a handful are taking them in eighth grade, some, but many of them are taking them in ninth grade. And our eighth-grade results are outpacing Nassau's results. I think they do, again, an outstanding job in a middle school preparing our students for this examination. You can look over at 2017. Again, we were at 97 percent, while the region was consistent at 86. We went up. And then the following year, we went down, but if you look at the state in 2018, you'll see that they went down four points as well. So whether that was a more difficult test, the questioning of the question layout of the test, we did see a 4 percent drop, but the state did as well-- Nassau County, I'm sorry. Earth science, again, very consistent. Again, our eighth graders compared to a handful of eighth graders and many ninth graders in other districts. And last year, in 2018, 90 percent passing. The NWEA map-- the map-- the map is the measures of academic progress. NWA is really taken hold in the district the past several years. We're doing a lot around it. It's-- Dr. Johnson talked to me when I first got here many years ago about having external validation, making sure someone outside your system is measuring the progress of your system. And with so many students not taking part in the state tests, it's important that we use the NWEA to assess our results. And so to look at this chart, you'll see our grade-three, where the red line, progressing up nicely compared to grade-three, four, five, the mean-- that is a national mean. Over 4.5 million students in the United States take the NWEA. So we are above the mean in each category. That was the reading. Here's the math. Another interesting thing about the reading, real quick, is there's no writing component in the NWEA, but it shows real consistency and a strong correlation to what we're doing on our state tests, where there is a huge writing component. See our NWEA math results? Again, our Rockville Center above the means. So grade-six, we see on a nice incline. Grade-seven, with the NWEA reading. Grade-eight, we're getting closer to the national mean. And so that does kind of correlate with what we saw in the grade-eight ELA state test. So that's certainly an area that we're going to look at. We're going to put a lot of resources and energy towards grades-seven, in particular eighth, in the middle school, just as we did the year prior, where we looked specifically at grade-six and its curriculum.
And, Chris, you're doing that this year?
Yes.
Will that change for next year? That's in the eighth grade?
The-- we would hope-- yes, we're implementing things in now, so that we hope to see those changes in results for next year. Right.
And, Chris, how often do the kids take the NWEA?
They take the NWEA three times a year.
And these are--
In the middle school, they take it twice a year. A lot of scheduling concerns. We do it at the elementary level three times a year because you have to have a three-times-a-year assessment of your students for response to intervention. Yeah, RTI, response to intervention. I almost said RIT. But the RIT is the NWEA score that you get. It's a lot of letters in your head, RVC, RTI.
And these scores are until the last time they took them?
These are our mean average-- yeah, our mean at the end of the year.
At the end of the year.
Thank you. There is a linking test that-- actually, it's not a test, but a linking to New York State assessments, where at mid-year, we can look at students we are concerned about, see their results in NWA, and say, hey, what's the plan for this student? Because the link to New York State results tells us that this student may struggle on a state assessment. So what are we doing in preparation for that? So this is a linking study that NWA does for New York State tests. And again, there's more information about that on the state-- on the page, and you can-- anyone that wants to can go-- can get this PowerPoint. We'll have it online, and you can-- those are live links you can click on. There are, of course, test results and parent reports and the like, resource interpretations from New York State on the Engage NY site. Again, that's available in the PowerPoint. And just real briefly, going forward, you may have heard-- I'm sure that the-- we are moving away from Common Core standards. We're moving toward next-generation learning standards. Just posted a roadmap over the years. We are in a raise awareness phase at this point, so this is part of that raising awareness. Winter 2018 through winter-spring 2019, we're going to start to do some professional development. We've been meeting with our grade-level teachers. We've been talking about the changes. We've been looking at coursework. There aren't a great many changes. A lot of the changes from Common Core curriculum to next-generation learning standards, one might describe as a rebrand, so to speak, but there are some specific changes, especially down at the elementary level, where there were concerns around developmental preparedness of youngsters and whether they were ready to do what was expected of them. So there are some changes, and we'll get into that more as we move forward. That is not going to take place for some time. We will still be testing on the old standards and therefore still be teaching on the Common Core standards for the time being. You'll see September 2020 is when we're going to start the full implementation of the next-generation learning standards and spring of that next year, 2021, so that school year, is when we'll start to test on the new standards. So any questions from the board?
We talked about this a little last year. The district releases the NWE data at the last report card for elementary students, at least, I know. We asked last year, and it didn't change, but just curious why we don't release them, you know, at the other times of the report card as well? Because when we have parent-teacher conference, some teachers have had-- have sat down and will pull it out and show you where the student is, and I know they're using the data as they go, but I think as parents, it's helpful to see that progress as well, because if you don't have a teacher that's incorporating that into their conference or-- I feel like parents should have access to that information so that they don't find out at the end of the year. There might have been a lapse in an area for a child. Maybe it's something they could visit with their teacher, school faculty, whatever. Just wanted to know what your thoughts are about that.
So at the middle school, we do it the same way, where we put it on the website-- on the portal at the end of the year, so to look back over that year. A lot of-- a great many districts-- almost all districts I know do it that way as well, where they only do it the one time a year. The concern around doing it several times a year is that teachers have a different level of familiarity in terms of the depth in which they go into the NWA reports, as you mentioned. So some teachers may be very comfortable pulling it out at the parent-teacher conference, and that's certainly-- parents should say to a teacher, I'd like to walk through the NWA report with you so I can see what are those areas there of strength and weakness. The NWA has what they call fall lapses or summer melt, as kids might go lower, and there'd be a concern around that. Wait a second. In the spring, he scored this, and now in the fall-- you know, what happened to him over the summer? So there's concerns around those issues. There's concerns at mid-year, at the winter as well. They have a winter dip sometimes with students. Just-- again, it's a 45-minute assessment. It's one time. It's a window in which we grab information from. And so teachers-- we do a lot of professional development around it. Again, Janine Sempino meets with our staff by grade level, individually with teachers, individually with principals. We pull out reports. We try to work with them as best we can. Hewitt School, one of our teachers, Ms. Whalen, is doing some gamifying, so to speak, and we're going to take a look at that closely to see if that really instills in kids the spirit that I really want to do better as part-- trying to get to that next level, earning badges and things. That's something that really seems to motivate kids at the elementary level, but I think even higher. So there's an aspect to that that she's working on, looking at. We actually filmed her class, working with some students and goals around that. So it's something that we've discussed with our teachers. It's something we've discussed with our principals. It's something I've discussed outside the district as well, and it's something that, as you know, Dr. Johnson works closely with NWEA on a lot of issues. He's actually working on them-- working with them around looking at a state model for this, as opposed to a two-day or three-day exam we've had over the years for many hours. Why can't we use the data? You see the correlation here when I show it to you. So why can't we use that same test for both? So it's something that we can continue to look at, and if parents continue to say, such as yourself, in conversations with teachers and principals, this is something I want to see more often or see earlier in the year. There should never be a surprise at the end of the year in an area of weakness. That's an ongoing communication we should be having with parents, even as a high school principal. I used to tell my teachers, no failure can be a surprise. No area of weakness can be a surprise for anyone. It should be a fait accompli. We do progress reports now at the high schools still and the middle schools, and I don't even know necessarily we're going to continue to look at those. Some parents love them, but a lot of parents don't look at them because they're already in looking at all the grades and all the scores and the homeworks up to the minute, the quizzes. I know John and Liz could speak more to that at another time, perhaps, but a long-winded answer. We'll continue to look at it, but it's something that we haven't just pushed aside. It's something we're being very thoughtful about.
I mean, we assess our kids all along. I think it would be helpful for a parent to be part of that, the growth, or if there is an issue, to be, you know-- brought to their attention. I really think that it would be beneficial if we considered, you know--
Well, I think--
--releasing those assessments more often than the end of the year.
The reports, right.
Yeah. For us, the end of the year is kind of a little bit too late. As a parent-- as a parent to say, you know, what do I need to work? Or what do I have to watch? Or what do I have to make sure you're doing? It's done at that point. So I hope that we, you know, look a little harder at that.
I think it's how teachers are using it, too. Teachers-- my understanding is that teachers look at the NWEAs, and they're looking at the strengths and weaknesses of the students, and then really individualizing, be able to form groups. That was my understanding.
That's exactly how we're using it. That's right.
But that--
So perhaps all the more reason, then, to have the parent part of that ongoing conversation, so that the parent knows how the teacher's approaching instruction--
Right.
--in the classroom with their child throughout the year.
Right. Agreed.
Yep. Without a doubt, something we can bring up at our next principals' meeting and have a discussion with them.
Thank you.
Just so we understand, though, that kids who are in need of service-- there's lots of conversations that go on back and forth between the regular classroom teacher, the service provider, who are the AIS teachers, and the parents. So-- and there's lots of other data that is utilized in order to establish where the child is and what progress is being made as they begin to move through the year. So this-- and just so we understand, the individual scores that are done in the middle of this school year are not as reliable as some of the other data that we use, and so they're-- and they give you a-- or may give you a false sense. Even though they give us some insights, they're better in the large than they are in the small. So what I mean by that is that if I have a group of kids in the room, and it may give me more insight in terms of how well I'm doing with the entire group, and not as much insight as into each individual student, you really need to garner that from others. Substantive things that are done in the classroom on a regular basis. So we'll talk to the principals about it, and I'm-- and I don't want to walk away from it. I understand exactly what you're saying. Anything that we have that we should be, in fact-- why would we not give it to them?
Right.
I think it's just important to remember that assessments-- just what you are saying, that they're not always reliable, that sometimes we have to look at lots of pieces of assessments. You don't want to scare parents either by giving them things that they're not going to understand, so you want to kind of include the whole picture. I think that's part of the discussion in this--
Right.
--debating what to give and not--
And as Dr. Johnson stated, a fall-to-spring look at a child gives you a much better window than a fall-to-winter, which is maybe-- the fall window closes late October, and then the winter window opens a month later. So there's not a lot of time in there for growth, and I may see two areas of weakness. I'm like, oh, my goodness, but it's because-- let's give us some time with a particular student and see that. But again, as Dr. Johnson just said in the end, if it's a bit of information that parents need and can utilize, then why hold on to it? So we'll have that discussion.
Thank you. Anybody else?
All right. Part two is actually a tag team from the South Side High School. I think we all know John Murphy was the principal and Liz Nussler, who was the assistant principal who coordinates the IB program here at South Side High School. So first part will be the state information, second will be the IB. So John?
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. So--
The mic's not on.
On, Mike?
Yes. Hold it in the back for a few seconds. Green light, come on.
Thank you. So what we're going to do is give you a quick overview of the New York State, the IB and the AP assessments for the high school for the 2017, '18 school year. We're going to start and end asking-- begging your indulgence, asking you to think more holistically, but we're going to talk about a series of discrete courses. They exist in a program of learning. That the ulterior motive that we always ask ourselves is that, do our graduates, upon leaving here, have genuine choices, genuine options available to them, and were those options made available as a result of the experiences that they had at South Side? The notion of improvement is a relative term, both in terms of the Regents' coursework and the IB coursework, and how do we, as Dr. Pelletieri says, self-assess and know that we're doing okay? And also, as we've been talking more in depth recently, what is it about the IB assessments that makes us so passionate about the program? So holistically, within the Regents' grades, there are basically-- for lack of a better word-- three different types of diploma options that a student has available from the state. There's a local diploma, a Regents' diploma that requires-- I'm oversimplifying. It's five Regents' exams, one math, one science, global history, U.S. history, and English, and a Regents' with advanced designation that requires nine exams, two more math exams, at least one more science exam, and a foreign language component. 99 percent of all of our graduates last year earned a Regents' diploma or better, and for the first time in the history of South Side High School, over 90 percent of our students earned a Regents' with advanced designation. 92 percent is the high watermark for the building. As a result of the results in the prior year, the 2016, 2017 year, as well as a variety of other factors, South Side High School was awarded the blue ribbon by the U.S. Department of Education in September of this year. So this is a holistic view of the Regents' exams for last year. Please note that each of the exam passing rates is a composite of three different exam sessions. August 2017, January 2018, June 2018 are combined into one holistic report that the state provides. What we have in front of us is a chart. The reason that I have the column on the left, the percentage of the cohort, that it's important to note the number of students and the percentage of students who are taking the exam. For instance, in English, it should come as no surprise that 100 percent of the 11th-grade cohort took the exam. It's a graduation requirement. All 11th graders have to. Whereas Spanish and French, only 94-- 93 percent of the cohort took the exam. That's because it's part of the Regents' with advanced designation, but it is not a graduation requirement. The passing rates in large print are last year's, and I included parenthetically the passing rate for the previous years to note any tendencies. And as you will note, for the most part, the passing rates and mastering rates are relatively stable, as they have been in most recent years. The Global Regents was new last year. This was the first year of what's called the Transitional Global Regents Exam, as they're transitioning more towards a core exam. This year, we will be taking the same exam, the Transitional Exam, in June this year. And as you will note, the passing rate and mastering rate was very stable relative to that which we were accustomed to in the exam preview-- prior to it. Please also note that the participation rates for some exams are very, very small. That is because, in the case of earth science and algebra, most of our students take those in the eighth grade. The only students who take earth science and algebra at the high school are either students who transferred into the district, who have not had it in middle school, or students who failed the exam the first time they took it in eighth grade. I'll mention it more on the next slide, but the percentage of the cohort is instructive to note in terms of geometry and algebra, too, as are their passing rates. The algebra, too, which occurs predominantly in our students in 10th grade, the passing rate was 95 percent, which is the highest that it's been in a while, even though last year's was consistently higher. The geometry passing rate continues to be a cause for concern. It's hovered between 78 and 82 percent for the last three years, and as you'll note, that is also commensurate with the passing rate for the state. It's the one outlier in the math sequence in these Common Core assessments that seems to be a continuing cause for concern for a variety of factors.
For the state, not only Rockville Center?
Yes, sir. In other words, they've listened and they've modified the other assessments, but the geometry still seems to be a stumbling block, particularly for special needs students. There's a disproportionate number of special needs students who are struggling with that relative to the other math exams. The reason that I mentioned this slide, this is a report that we get from the state. That's a relatively new one. They call them elective regent's exams because they're not part of the requirement for the regent's diploma. These are the ones that gravitate toward, are regent's with advanced designation. The reason that I just introduced this slide is that we can talk about passing rates, but the passing rates need to be placed in context. I'm just going to switch back for one second. The physics results last year were a source of pride. There was a significant increase in the passing rate by almost twelve percent, which is very atypical. We don't see that kind of drastic anomalous rise and fall. And it was a very specific concerted effort on the part of the three physics teachers who should be commended. But, and I'm proud of that, but the thing that I'm most proud of in terms of holistically is when you look at the physics at the bottom of this, there's, Southside High School is on the left, and the Nassau County region, which is a competitive region in its own right, is on the right. Eighty-seven percent of our students pass the exam, of our students. But that's over seventy-two percent of the cohort, meaning traditionally, in the rest of Southside, of the county, thirty-five percent of students get to physics before they graduate. We almost double the number of students who get to physics, yet our passing rate still exceeds the county average. I think those need to be taken into account, especially when we get to the more elective regent's exams, that the passing rate is laudable, but the number of students who elect to and excel in these courses is really the commendable effort and gets us to our IB diploma program. Again, AP courses are about access, and like last year, seventy-seven percent of our students who graduate Southside High School complete at least one AP math course before graduating. That was a Herculean leap from 2015, 2016. Students, after they finish their IB math sequence, elect to take one of three calculus courses. Most of our students elect to take calculus because the experience is a determinant of success in college. There's an IB math studies track that they could take either statistics or calculus, but the overwhelming majority choose calculus. Why the experience of that year of calculus has an enormous effect in terms of their efficacy, in terms of college coursework. The actual results in the, in the respective exams are moderate to worrisome, but suffice to say, it's the experience of the students' experience that full year of calculus is the real benefit and the real factor that we use to monitor our own successes. Which brings us to the IB diploma program, and Ms. Nusler, please.
Hello, everyone. So last year, 2017-18 school year, was honestly a record-breaking year for the IB program, from the number of students involved to the percentage of the graduating class who actually earned the diploma. So if you take a look, we had four hundred sixty-two students, that's both juniors and seniors combined, who registered as part of the program, either as full diploma candidates, and I'll explain what that means momentarily, or as course candidates, meaning that they might have taken one or two or three IB classes. We ended up with a hundred and fourteen students earning the IB diploma, which matches a previous record that had been set. So that's basically our highest number. But what stood out to me in particular was the percentage of the graduating class. You know, in previous years, we were, we had about fifty to fifty-one percent of the senior class choosing to do the full IB diploma. Last year, that number leapt, that percentage leapt to sixty-one percent. We attribute that largely, I think, to the inclusion of IB business management, you know, in listening to students and thinking about what their interests are, their needs are, their desires. We had decided to introduce that course. Last year was the first cohort to sit that exam. But what was interesting was so many students now felt that they could do the full diploma. Maybe they hadn't wanted to double up in a science, or maybe they hadn't wanted to take an arts class, but with business management, they felt that they could go for the diploma. And so we broke a record in that forty-one percent of the graduating class actually earned the diploma. We'd never reached that number before. So something to celebrate. Okay, so how do you actually earn the diploma? And I talk about the diploma because it encompasses everything. As I said before, students can elect to take individual classes, and they don't have to do the full diploma. So you see on the side that there are six subject groups, and the idea is that students generally have to choose at least one course from each of these groupings. So students will take three higher-level courses and three standard-level courses for a combination of six. Higher-level courses simply mean two-year courses. The distinction is one of time. So higher-level courses are two years, standard-level courses are one to two years. So they'll have their six courses, and the idea is that they need to accumulate twenty-four points from those six courses combined in order to earn the diploma. Each course is graded on a scale of one to seven, with the idea being that a four represents a satisfactory understanding of the course content. So if you think of six courses times the four points, that's the minimum of a twenty-four. However, students can earn as much as forty-two points, as well as three potential bonus points from the central elements. And I don't have a slide, but just to give you an idea, those of you who are not familiar with it, the central elements are the extended essay, which is a three-to-four-thousand-word essay that is conducted over two years. The students choose a mentor, they pick a subject and a topic of personal interest, and they work on that paper over two years with the support of various members of the school. There's an amazing class called Theory of Knowledge that they take senior year that is basically about the nature of knowledge. What do we claim to know? How do we know it? What's the evidence? And then finally, there's CAS, Creativity, Activity, and Service. And that is basically largely what students are already doing. They're already involved in athletics, they're already involved in creative pursuits, but it's an opportunity for them to reflect on those experiences and think about how they are growing as people and how they're impacting other people. So the bonus points would come from Theory of Knowledge and the extended essay combined. How they score on those two can get them extra bonus points to try and earn the diploma. So these are our results from last year. If you take a look, these are the higher-level exams. So once again, these are the two-year courses. We have the number of students who registered for the course, we have the school's average as well as the global average. And that's one measure of success, to compare the school average with the global average, because at Southside, we don't gate or restrict students from taking IB courses, as many IB schools do. We have open access, where any student who's willing to, you know, take the leap and try out an IB course can. So anytime our average comes near to or exceeds the global average, it's really a cause for celebration. So if you take a look, you'll see that English, Spanish, chemistry, and film improved upon last year's results, with chemistry even exceeding the global average. We then move to the standard level, and again, these are the one-to-two-year courses. So once again, you see the number of students registered, as well as the school and global averages. We had environmental systems, physics, and math studies. Those three classes saw gains from last year, with physics, math SL, and math studies exceeding the global average. We are looking at ways, you know, to improve upon results in classes such as psychology and film. And actually, those two courses are both in the midst of revisions, so the teachers of those courses have gone for training, have written new curriculum, and have had an opportunity to assess and adjust and see how their changes go. Another measure of success is to consider how many students do get a four or better in their course. So these were courses that had exemplary results. Theater students, a hundred percent of them getting fours or betters. I'd like to note or point out that English and math, which are our most inclusive classes, posted some really strong results as well. So I just mentioned course revisions. Currently, every seven years or so, IB undergoes a review and a revision of their courses to keep things fresh, make sure they're promoting best practices. So right now, we have Spanish and French, who are in year one of their course revision. Film is in year two. We have English coming up next year, and then math following, the following year. And what we're noticing in terms of trends is IB recently conducted a workload, a student workload study. And what we're noticing in terms of many of the revisions is that there seem to be fewer assessment components. So for instance, in Spanish and French, students used to complete something called the WA, or written assignment. That has been removed, and actually, the skills required for that are being transferred into one of the assessments in May that they would already sit. It's kind of being combined with the previous exam as a more efficient way of testing those skills. The interactive orals have also been removed, although there is still an oral component. And then upcoming in language and literature, we've been told that four written tasks that currently complete, sorry, currently complete are going to be replaced with one longer analytic essay. In addition, they've removed some of the additional oral activities, although there will still be one formal oral activity. So that seems to be the trend in terms of IB, recognizing that there can be and should be ways to streamline some of the coursework and still keep high standards. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, congratulations, those are phenomenal results, and I don't want to focus on negatives. But when we look at our AP math, it's, we've raised it for a couple of years that our results are, as you say, not exactly what we'd like them to be. What steps are we taking? What are we doing?
There are a couple of different options. There's a short-term and a long-term response. The feeder courses for the AP courses are math studies and SL math. SL math dovetails and lends itself very nicely to BC calculus, because the SL math has a calculus component in it. I just, tell me if I go long-winded. There's two different types of calculus, AB and BC. If you imagine three semesters of college calculus, AB of the first two semesters, BC is the second and third. So our SL math students transitioning to BC calculus, that works really well. IB math studies is a composite course of statistics, probability, advanced geometry, and a little bit of calculus. What it really lends itself to is a further analysis of statistics. So the students who gravitate into those statistics courses do extremely well, but our students pine for that calculus course. So despite that, they still elect to take the calculus course. The fit is not as nice as it would be in SL math or statistics, but that experience of that one year serves them well. So what I'm not willing to compromise on is students' ability to self-select into their coursework. Having said that, there are several options, one of which we've tried already, after the May exam for the IB exams, to start to introduce calculus in the eleventh grade, to give the students a little bit of an edge. The other option that is on the event horizon is to take a look at the revisions being made to the IB math sequence. What they're trying to do, they're not trying to do, what they are going to do is, as Ms. Nusler Cross said, try to give students that rich experience that prepares them for the university without overburdening them with work. What they are exploring now are making the maths not one-year coursework anymore, but a two-year coursework, one of which is called applied mathematics and one of which is analytical math. That gives them a two-year sequence that lends itself to a calculus experience, so that the students can have a seamless two-year experience, offer them the higher-level math so they can still take the college credit, but also transition a little bit better from one year to the next. It would also cut down on the number of exams that they'd have to take.
Would you lose, in doing that, would you lose kids in science? Because you're generally only taking three higher levels. So if you do math, history, and English...
Not necessarily. You wouldn't be losing. It would give the students more flexibility in terms of what they would do. Approximately forty percent of our students take what are called extra certificates, meaning they take more than the six required and they take extra. If they had the SL or HL option for the math, that offers flexibility in terms of what they're going to count as their three higher level. What they count as three, and then what could be extra.
So you've thought about it?
Thinking about it.
Yeah, but if they take, if they take science, they usually take math.
Yes.
That, that, right?
Yes. Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, they have to.
Do you think our kids are going to calculus because they don't respect statistics? Or do you think colleges don't respect statistics?
I think there's a lot of factors involved. I think there is a calculus bias that universities salivate over calculus, and maybe for good reason. There was a long study that was done that I think espoused the fact that calculus is almost like the silver bullet. If you get that, you're calculus, you're golden. I do think that they're...
Exposure, exposure even, right?
But it's a pretty good calculus course. I don't...
Yeah. What I'm saying, you don't have to pass necessarily.
No, not necessarily, but I mean, there is, as a humanities person, there's a really strong argument that supports, for seventy-five percent of the majors that students go into college, there's a mathematical literacy that comes with statistics that has a better transfer. So in terms of instruction, I'm a big proponent of statistics, but I think the decision is complicated by students looking at what looks good on a transcript. They're not knowing what they're really going to major in, and the calculus does give them that extra option.
And what's my competition taking?
Which is a whole other subject.
Interesting. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Thank you.
Is there an actual presentation? There's no actual presentation. For the safety reasons.
Thank you, John.
Good night.
Thank you.
Update on COVID, Jim?
Yes, thank you very much. Usually, I would turn this over to Mr. Bartels, but I've been fascinated with the process of replacing this floor there. They are right on schedule to complete it within the next week and a half. The lines are down. I don't know if any of you have been up there?
I was there this morning.
Yeah, yeah. So that, we are, we are moving along. The floor is everything that we thought it was going to be, and I think a little bit more. So, again, it's a wooden floor, for those of you, for those who may not be aware of that. We had, as you may recall, discussed the possibility of doing a different type of floor, but eventually went back to a wood floor. It is, in fact, sealed differently than the prior floor, and consequently, we do not have to worry, I don't think, in the future about any moisture from going, coming from cracks that may appear in the cement below, rising up and doing damage to the floor. At any rate, we're moving along, and we expect it to be done probably sometime either next week or certainly by the middle of the following week.
So they're on schedule?
Yeah, and by the way, so is Cunningham, who's doing the AC and heating units on the roof. We expect that to be done at the same time as well.
And that's something, it's not just AC, it's their heat, so...
We're, right now, there's enough heat during the day to keep them livable.
No, I understand, but we will need that this winter, we can't get away without it.
However, right. Those are the heating units for those two rooms, right? However, right, those are the heating units for those two rooms, right, for the auditorium as well.
We had talked about the problem with them being...
Well, the auditorium is done, I mean, that's finished. But we're not turning it on until we have both units operable.
They are using the auditorium now, but there's no...
No, no, we didn't turn it on yet. Not there yet.
They're using...
Oh, no, no, the auditorium is being used, yeah.
But it's just not heated currently.
Yeah, right.
Well, it's heated from room.
You don't need the days like that.
A couple of mornings, it's been pretty chilly.
Well, I don't know, if, look, I mean, I wasn't there today, but I was there the day before, yeah, yesterday, and it's warm. I mean, it's warm enough.
Well, these past few days have been, have been beautiful.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions, concerns? Thank you. All right, now we move into what is a public hearing on our district-wide safety plan. We'll review the plan, and then anybody who has any comments or questions from the public can come, but specifically speak to the district-wide safety plan. That's the stage we're in right now. Okay?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Dr. Leahy, who is a member of the committee, to provide us with a brief summary of what the district-wide, just so we all understand, that the safety plans operate at two levels. We have plans that exist for the district, which we are expected to share with the public, and then there are plans for each of the building, which we're not permitted to share with the public. And so what we're focusing on tonight is the district-wide plan, and we do not get involved in any of the plans that we have in effect for each of the buildings. All right? Noreen?
Something called the SAVE, the SAVE legislation, the Save Schools Against Violence in Education, which requires that a district-wide safety plan be established, and that plan would provide for the safety, health, and well-being, security of students and staff. And then with the advent of anti-bullying, anti-discrimination, and violence regulations, mental health mandates, and overall security concerns, all of these things have contributed to some required updates to this district response plan, and that's what we're presenting this evening. The district-wide safety plan is made available for public comment for 30 days prior to its adoption, which we hope to do at the December 5 meeting, and it needs to be provided to the entire school community, and that's what we're doing now. However, the building-level emergency plans remain confidential due to the sensitive nature that's included in those building plans, and concern that that information not be disclosed. So the plan before you involves, talks about what PPS staff, what kind of training is involved, is required every year. It talks about all of the emergency response drills that are required in each of our buildings every year. Talks about the members of the district-wide safety team, emergency response teams, and so forth. So it's very focused on what training we provide every year for faculty and students.
Will this be up on the website? How does the community...
It will be up on the website for review.
So people, people can email us over the next 30 days before we adopt it, or whatever...
Correct, 30-day public comment period.
I had a question about training. So I know it says in here that staff is trained within 30 days of hire. How do we handle substitutes, people that are kind of in different buildings? Because some of, I know some of it is general, but in a specific sense, how do substitutes or people that move around buildings understand what's happening in that moment, heat of the moment, what they need to do if they're not in that building all the time?
So it depends on what training you're talking about. There's some required training that, for example, mental health awareness, school violence prevention, that's done by school psychologists at the beginning of every school year. DASSA training that's done by social worker, the DAX, beginning of every school year, and if someone new comes in at that point in time, they basically are trained individually. Then there's some training that's done by, in the beginning of the year, on superintendent's conference day. And then if it's, if it's something that's specific to a building, then when those substitutes or when those, if it's someone that travels from building to building, they would have to attend the training in both of those sites. And not the overall kind of general training, but the specific training on fire drills, lockdowns, lockouts, and so forth.
Okay, so they would do that? Okay.
Typically, most rooms don't they have, like, charts as to where to go?
They do.
If you were subbing in that room and what to do, there's emergency folders, so you...
It's in the back of, every door has to have the egress plan.
So that's they can look at that.
But one other question I had was on page 11, and it talks about mental health and violence prevention training for students and staff, and it says online training may be utilized. Can you just talk about what that exactly is?
So there's a, right now, as I, as I mentioned, that the staff is trained by the building psychologists at a faculty meeting every year, and the student mental health training is, I explained at the last meeting, it's, it's pretty elaborate now what the state is required in terms of implementation, K-12 in the curriculum. But we belong to, it's actually Dr. Palitieri's office subscribes to a training, a video training subscription, and they will offer topics such as sexual harassment, violence prevention, they have DASSA, and if we wanted to opt for training in that way, we could.
Okay. So really, I think what threw me off about it was that it said in the sentence, "annual training for students and staff." So should we not conclude that students would have any sort of online training for mental health? They would still be counseled by people? I think it's just a little misleading. That's separate then?
Tara, where are you on that page?
Page 11, "Early Detection of Potentially Violent Behavior." It says, "The team will make recommendations to the superintendent for appropriate annual training for students and staff, and violence prevention and mental health online training may be utilized."
So just to distinguish between students having online training where really it's going to be an in-person, in-class kind of thing?
I don't know, maybe we should, it would be a question I would, it was a question I had. Just don't want to give parents the impression we train students on mental health.
Maybe you'd like for staff.
For staff.
For staff.
I guess the only other question I had was the chart on page 14, which lists all the people that we would contact in a disaster. Some of these are just specific people's email addresses and phone numbers. How do we deal with making sure they're getting to, like, a larger group of people instead of just the one person who runs Jacob's Ladder or the one person who runs Rosalie? You know, if that one person's not there, that email address, I'm just curious how, how it would actually play out in a, in a real scenario of contacting these places? Do we have a quicker way than email and phone numbers? Do we text? Do we...
We do Connect Ed.
Okay.
We do those, we, it should be there.
It says Connect Ed, but I'm just curious...
Oh, wait, it's right underneath that chart.
Put it up on the website, Connect Ed.
What we do is we, pardon me?
It says in that paragraph, everything that we do.
We reach out to them, and they give us a number of, whatever numbers. Every summer, we reach out to them and ask us what numbers they want in Connect Ed.
Oh, okay, so it would not be just limited to this chart?
These are the leaders of those...
No, 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 not, no.
So maybe we should also, not limited to this notification list or something?
Well, these are the leaders, and you can, those, I wanted to add.
No, that's not, these, these people are called directly, but in addition to that, we have a Connect Ed that goes out to all the parents.
Yeah, because they, well, listing president of the Board of Education, 255-8921.
That's what I was saying, I mean, like, what's the quickest way to...
That's not reaching...
So we would be included individually in Connect Ed?
It goes to Jackie. And who Jackie pushes out to us.
Okay.
Okay. So I will open up the mic to anybody in the audience who has a specific question about the district-wide safety plan. Anybody want to come up?
[inaudible]
All right, very good. So do we need to do anything different, Jackie, for this?
No, you're not expected to act on it tonight. This is really the hearing.
This is just a presentation.
It provides us an opportunity just to put it out there for, and now there's public comment that we can accept after this.
Okay. All right, now we go into items for discussion or in policies. Policy 5681, school safety plans. Any questions? All right, Jackie, we'll move that up at the next meeting. On stage two, we're looking at 7580, education of students in temporary housing.
In the first paragraph, we talk about public preschool education. Do we include that because of services that, because we don't have public preschool. So do we include that because of the services that we provide for preschoolers through CPSE?
Yes.
Okay. Or whatever. Okay. And then I heard you went over the migratory child.
Last meeting, right?
At the last meeting.
Two places, yeah.
I don't, am I...
Page two is on this, see?
Something, it's still, there's like, there's still something that's confusing. It says item two below, there is no item two. Something is confusing to me. Also, it feels like some of this language is not up to date when we say, it's right toward the bottom, the term migratory child includes a child who is or whose parent or spouse is. The way I read that, it sounds like the child has a spouse, which could be, but, you know, but normally, don't we usually say whose parent or person or guardian?
Guardian.
Or person in charge, right, yeah.
I'm sorry, where are you?
Towards the bottom of page one, the second-to-last bullet point above.
Honor charge or qualifications on this. Yep, that's what that means.
I mean, I suppose we have a young child.
Could. You're right, it does. Good Lord.
Right, like, really...
You talk about words taken on a life of their own, here it is, oh my goodness. Wow.
So it sounds like, it seems like...
Whose parent or spouse.
It's happened.
Five-year-old.
It's not impressive.
But the truth is...
You could have a high school, you could have an 18-year-old.
You could, but is that the intention?
You can have high school students who are migratory.
Yes, but is that the intent?
Well, we'll have to, I think we have to do a little homework.
I think we have to research, I don't want to research it, because we legitimately have had students that have been married, and I don't know if this is dated or not.
Okay.
If the language is intended to say this...
We travel with your spouse, so...
Or intended to say whose parent or that parent's spouse is, I'm not sure, so I have to really...
Okay.
Right.
Do a little research, because I don't...
Parent or parent's spouse, right.
Yeah.
Still looking.
Yeah, I mean, it was just, later on, we write, "parent or person in parental relationship, guardians," so that's the other thing. We changed all of our policies to say that, so it's just...
Person in...
Yeah.
Where did you see guardian?
Uh, page five. It's just, it's the newer section, and it's more of what we generally write in our policies.
Person in a parental relationship.
Yeah. So, nothing like that, no.
When was the last time we looked at this? Adopted '03, revised '07. That was a long time ago. That was a million years ago. All right, so we'll still move it up and just deal with that.
Find out who we're talking about with the spouse. Whose spouse is it?
Okay, 5413, procurement, uniform, grant, guidance for federal awards.
Thank you for the changes.
Anything?
So now this is on two?
This was two.
And adopt.
Yes.
Okay. So we're, this is stage three. Who's echoing? Me? I hear it. That's what I'm told, your mic should be on. Mute it if you want to mute it, but don't turn it off. That's what causes that imbalance. The green light, it's supposed to be... You want the green light, yeah.
When people turn it off, it's...
Yes, it causes, because they're balanced, they're set up so that they're all on. Once you start lowering it, it starts, you know, the fewer, the fewer lights...
Echo, echo, echo?
Yes, yours on green.
What if I put it on red? Then it makes the echo.
Then you're making an echo. You can mute it.
It's still echoing, I'm on green.
Chris, is that on?
It's still echoing, I'm on green.
You can mute it.
Or maybe that one's on. Robert's is on.
Okay.
It's Robert's fault. I think Robert isn't here. Everything.
We better... Is it bothering anybody that much? So we'll move, we'll figure it out next meeting. All right, student physicals. Go further away.
Some people have been bothered.
This...
Now that we do...
Yes, we did have a lot of questions. Anybody? Nothing?
This is the physicals, yeah.
7513, administration of medication. Nothing? Nothing?
Yeah. So that was on stage three, right?
Yeah. All right.
Actually, R and F are companions.
Okay, right, it's just the release form.
It's the form that accompanies the regulation.
All right, so any questions on the form itself or the guidelines for administering? All right, there we go. That was exciting. Have a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve all the board actions as listed on the agenda? A through...
And present agenda.
A through F?
And the addendum.
And the addendum.
And the P A R. And the P A R.
And the addendum with the P A R.
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, can we just get an explanation about the resolution for the independent evaluator hardship waiver?
Yes, you can. What essentially we have to do is that the state is requiring us to pass this evaluation, I mean, this waiver. What it means is that the, if not, we would then have to, this is all about APPR. We would have to abide by the guidelines and the state, all of the state data that would have to be utilized in the evaluation of our teachers. This waives us with that responsibility for this year. Virtually every school district in the state is allowed to do this. Commissioner has recommended it, and therefore, we are recommending that we adopt this for one more year. It's a year to year.
Right.
Supposed to expire this year, in, well, in 18, yeah, 18, 19. And then we're anticipating that there will be a whole new set of regulations at the end of this upcoming school year, right now.
I'm looking forward to it.
Supposedly, yeah.
Can I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
We didn't approve everything.
Sorry, I thought we did.
Vote on the last thing.
Well, we just had a, oh, you had a question? Okay. Can I, that was a question?
That was my question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to leave it at that. Okay?
Good. Thank you.
All right, thank you everybody for coming. We'll meet again on the 14th. In this room is a regular Board of Education meeting.